This meeting from last night, or the Hickory Public Schools Board of Education, we now actually need to approve our personnel list, personnel list number sixteen, that we were able to go over last night, and so at this time, we do need a motion.
Move to three personnel list number sixteen.
Which has been made. Would there be any items? To approve?
Yeah.
If, all I? Okay, any names? No names. Okay, so motion is passed, and the minutes have been approved. And I didn't do the little famous little thing right here, but I want to do it just for the record.
Give it.
Oh yeah, we're in there. No, but now we have Chris Campbell, Campbell, and we have Paula Lovett with us from Campbell and Shattley. We are so happy that you have came all the way down the mountain, and probably back up the mountain too with that trip.
Absolutely.
Yes, we thank you for being with us tonight to answer a lot of questions, and hopefully maybe have some questions for us about our superintendent search that we are embarking on. And how let us, we understand you have an à la carte type package that we can choose from the different services that you provide. And so, we would love to hear from you and let you tell us what we, what we can experience through this process with you.
Sure, we'd be happy to do a thank you, private chair and board members, good evening. Thank you very much for being willing to meet tonight. As probably all of you or most of you know by now, I was in would be Burke County Schools last night, and their superintendent announced that he is retiring from Burke County Schools. And Dr. Putnam will be actually coming this way, and will be an executive vice president of Kadavah Valley Community College. So certainly wish him well, but I was processing with that board in closed session last night, and that closed session ended up lasting a lot longer than I thought it would, so it actually worked out very well. So, thank you for being flexible, I appreciate it very much. So, again, Chris Campbell and Paula Lovett, they're legal with the firm, and of course, we're right up the road in Asheville. And our firm pretty much represents school boards and community colleges, that's pretty much what we do. We have about thirty school boards and about eleven fifteen community colleges on a regular basis. So, we do a lot of this. We are not a search firm, and I think you know that, we don't offer search firm or headhunter services. We don't go out and actually try to solicit individuals to bring to you. What we offer is a board assisted search, that's the service that we provide.
You need to know, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're fine. Good to see you.
How are we far as ice trips, not at all?
Oh my lord.
Dr. Chris Campbell and Paula Lovett, my parents.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Welcome, we're glad y'all are here.
Absolutely. So you haven't missed anything?
It's because I was late, y'all were waiting for me.
Just getting started with kind of an overview, okay, so. But as I was saying, we provide a board assisted search. So, we're here, we feel very strongly that school boards can attract and select a superintendent on their own, without having somebody whose job it is to actually find the person and try to bring them to you. But certainly nothing against search firms and headhunters to do that kind of thing. And if at any point during the process, you want someone like that, or want to add on services like that to some other group, you will not offend us whatsoever. The one thing you can't do is offend us. We work for over fifty public entities, so it is really hard to offend us. If we took things personally, we would not be in this business much longer. So, we're here to serve you, and we want you to be happy. So please, don't hesitate to ask questions, or bring up concerns that you might have some time to time. I know that there is, from talking to Mr. White, that there is a desire to look at having a superintendent in place by July one, or August one at the latest, if at all possible. Is that kind of a consensus right now in general, that would like to have a permanent superintendent in place if possible?
I mean, for me, I'd like to find the right person, and if that can't happen by July first, then that's okay. But, my goal would be to not have it, not have it over that.
And I agree completely with that. To me, your parachute in this entire process is if at any point you're not happy with the pool of candidates that you have, we can help you find an interim superintendent. We just did that in Jackson County, and Jackson County had an interim superintendent for the entire year. And tomorrow night, we've assisted that board, they'll be announcing and voting on their new superintendent tomorrow night. So, they did that. They decided to get an interim in place to last longer, to do, to take their time on longer search.
And we may have on staff an interim, just, you know, in the possibility we go that long.
That somebody could do that as well, so gotcha, good, too. Well, and I think right now, if you don't mind, let me talk about, and I'm talking in general. I'm not talking about the Hickory County, Hickory City Schools, or any employee of Hickory City Schools. But let me give you our philosophy on internal candidates, if you end up having internal candidates. Our philosophy is very straightforward as far as them serving as interim. We do not believe that you should ask someone who is going to be or is an internal candidate to serve as your interim superintendent. And this is the reason. The reason is, there are a million things that can happen while that person is serving as interim that can go badly, that can go very badly, that are not their fault, but can ruin their chances of being superintendent, and we've seen it happen before. So you can do it, and our advice is that, that before you ask someone internally to be the interim, you talk to them about whether or not they'd like to apply for the job. And if they will, you find someone else to serve as interim. Now, they need to serve for a month or two, fine. But we don't believe you should ask an internal person to serve for nine or twelve months as the interim. It's up to you. That's just from experience.
Well, I wouldn't have it that long.
No.
Yeah, yeah, we just don't think it's fair to them. It may seem counterintuitive, but we've seen it, it really hurts the most.
Oh, right. But only if they are wanting to.
If they want the candidates.
They don't want them to pull, we can ask them.
If they were to say, I will not apply, I will not serve as nominated, and I will not run it fast, then absolutely. Making them the interim base completions. Yeah, because that saves you money, you only have to provide a small stipend, or a legitimate stipend to them, and that's it. So what I've brought tonight, because I thought it would help with the conversation, is a proposed or draft timeline. So with what we've said, let me pass this around.
In my scamper over here.
And then. Is that enough for everybody? So if you don't mind, let me go through this proposed or draft schedule, and then I'm happy to answer your questions. I think this will actually make our time more efficient. Are you seeing what a sample process would be for your timeline of July one, 2021? We would propose for you to designate two board members to work with us just on one issue because of timing, and that would be the application and the advertisement. We could actually have the application and the advertisement posted statewide, nationally, and on your website by March 12th. By this Friday.
Wow.
We could have it ready to roll by this Friday, if you wanted to move that quickly.
I assume you've got templates and things like that, just to specialize for what we're doing, right?
Yeah, absolutely, and we would take that and kind of, and I should have said that, recently, we've assisted Lincoln County, Asheville City, Henderson County, Stanley County, Jackson County. So yes, we've got things that we can modify to get it up and running pretty quickly, that works. We suggest that you advertise through the North Carolina School Boards Association, which will get you national exposure as well, that's free. The North Carolina Association of School Administrators is also free. And then the two, if you want national exposure at the highest level, we recommend EdWeek. EdWeek is a thirty day publication for four hundred ninety-five dollars. And then the American Association of School Administrators has a school superintendent subgroup or association. They will advertise for you for five hundred and sixty dollars. So for right out of a thousand, you can cover the landscape in advertising at that point. So we would post March 12th.
Would you recommend we do both of those? I mean, for a school system this size, do you think we're going to have national candidates? What would you, you've done our size before, what do you recommend?
Right, I, you know, I think that I would recommend that you do a national search. And the reason I recommend national search is that your issues are multi-layered, and also you're an urban, so to speak, school district, and I think that's a specialty. I don't think it's a specialty in that you wouldn't consider someone who didn't have experience in a government system, but I would not limit myself. And I think for the thousand dollars, you can feel good that you've really gotten your name out there. The other reason I'll tell you that too is, this is one of the most attractive places to retire. And you should not be afraid of someone who wants to come spend four to eight years. You know, a lot of people are thinking eight years out from retirement. Well, the life of a superintendent in North Carolina right now is a little over two or three years. There, you know, statewide, it is not, and nationally, superintendents are not serving as long as they used to serve.
That's scary to hear.
Five or ten years, but it's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, so. But, this part of North Carolina still attracts quality professionals who want to stay, and want to put on great, so, you know, I would recommend that you do those, just to make sure the general. Good question. So then, if we, if we looked at that, we'd suggest at least a month for the applications to be out there. So that would be, you know, April sixth could be the deadline, that we would receive applications, and we turn those around pretty much the same day. We've got them ready, we'll drive them down the mountain in notebooks, or on sticks, or whatever you want to be able to look at electronically, to have those with you. Now, let me say one thing real quick. What's not on here is during this month period while you're waiting to get your applications in, that's the time to solicit input to the degree you want. And the two easiest ways to solicit input, one is a survey, and I've got an example I'm going to leave with you that we used in Jackson County. And then the other way, and that survey asks people to identify who they are as far as categories. Are you a PTA member? Are you an employee? Are you a community member? So you can kind of see in the results who's resigned, and what the trends are. The other way is forums, and a lot of districts will decide to go ahead and do a forum or two, out in the community, and pick two or three places, and tell folks, we will be there for a work session, public forum. We're there to hear from you. I recommend you allow people five minutes to speak. They never use five minutes when you give them five minutes. Some do, but most of them can tell you what they want to tell you in two or three minutes. And that would be a good way too. And what you're soliciting there, of course, is characteristics and issues. What are the characteristics that your community wants to see, your stakeholders want to see in a superintendent? And what are the most pressing issues facing the Hickory City Schools, as seen by your stakeholders? You know, and get that input, and then that input will help inform your decision.
So I have, I have a logistics question about that, and I think I know the answer, but I'll. So, I mean, when we, when the board has meetings, the board calls meetings, it's not one of us that is doing all the work. It's usually Ginger that kind of does it. Is she the person that would, that we would, so who would we use to kind of organize some of this stuff? Because we're all kind of volunteers, we don't have, we have paid staff of the, of the school, but you don't want to cross lines, you don't want to, you want to be careful there.
Right, great question. The benefit is, again, remember, we're full-time school terms. We do adjacent best, so we get it, and we know how to work with the board secretary. We use your staff for all of that.
Okay, and then that's kind of my question, how do we do that?
Yeah, we would contact Ginger and say, board wants to do a special call meeting on this date, and we would make those decisions in board meetings. So Ginger would be sitting here, and we're there to send out the notices and everything.
And I figured that was the answer, but I feel like, because we have a sitting superintendent, we have the staff in place, and we're, we don't, we don't have a full-time staff to do this kind of stuff. I want to make sure we don't step on toes, we don't cross lines, we do everything.
Right, now, there would not be coordination, we're being confidential. For example, your staff, when it comes to receiving applications, processing them, getting them to you, this is your staff right here.
Okay. That's good for us to know.
Absolutely.
I want to know the boundaries and the guidelines.
Right, when it comes to logistics, we'll be coordinating with your staff when it comes to issues of confidentiality. For example, the applications come straight to a secure email that we have in our file. So nothing confidential ever comes to the school. It's always through us to, to anything that confidential. You can do an open process by which the candidates are publicly known. We don't recommend an open process. We have seen that it diminishes the quality of candidate. Because folks have good jobs, they want to come to you. You want to consider that person. If they have to go public, they're not going to apply. So we feel strongly that an open process, you lose good.
Will we get all of our local candidates from these postings, or is there a local posting that we're?
No, it'll be posted on your website, Hickory County, Hickory City Schools website, and there'll be a direct link for the application, for your local candidates, national candidates, and fill it out in the.
Candidate.
It's all very simple. And it all triggers off your website, your Hickory City Schools website. You know, there'll be an announcement, when you pull up your webpage, on your main page, there'll be an announcement right there, you know, superintendent applications, deadline, link here for the application. Here's how you submit.
Ah, forgive me, but the question that you asked, and you said, no, you won't want to do that, what did you ask? What was the question?
No, I just had an open. He just, when he was talking about not to let everybody know who are.
Yeah, we recommend a confidential process, not an open process where the candidates are known to the community. Yes, some, community colleges especially, like to have their three finalists do community forums and things like that. That's very common in the community college world, but in the K-12 world, that's not as common. In some states it is. In some states, they publicly disclose all their applicants, but we don't recommend it.
Right, I mean, in my, what I've done in the past with superintendent searches, I feel like we've almost gone in closed session.
And we will.
When looking at the applications.
Yeah, when you receive the applications, we will meet in closed session to narrow those down. Right, so let's keep going.
Do you call any of those, or do you, I mean, or you give us everything that we get?
No, we don't call anything. That's why we call it a board assistant search. And we've got a process, and I don't mind telling you exactly what it is. We will give you all the applications, you'll have plenty of time to review this. Then when we come together, we will take non-binding straw holes, we'll take one right away. We'll ask everybody to identify five to sixteen bits they're interested in, okay? What happens every time, it's okay. There will be three or four that most of you are interested in. There will be eight to fifteen that nobody could care less about. And there'll be four or five we need to talk about. I have sat, when I wasn't in charge, I've sat with public bodies where someone had said, let's go through every candidate. I can't get that time in my life back.
That's, you're right, I mean, there's some people, I've done lots of job searches, and ninety percent of the applicants you get are never going to get the job.
Correct, so you're, we've got a process by which you'll be able to identify very quickly the ones that are going to be semifinalists, and the ones that aren't, and we'll spend the time it takes talking about the ones that are, you know, in the gray. So looking back at the deadline, it's a calendar here, so you would receive all those applications on the sixteenth. Then we would propose four days later, this is just a proposal, so you can kind of see how it works. Then on Tuesday, April twentieth, you would meet in closed session, and at that point, you would identify semifinals, and we recommend them more than six. But that's give or take, if there's eight people you're really interested in, great. If there's only five, great.
So this is before this meeting, this particular meeting, you talked about on the twentieth, we've already selected our three finalists?
No, 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 before this meeting on the twentieth, you've just received the applications. Yeah, and you've had four days to sit at your kitchen table and review all of them.
Right.
Yeah, then you come to the meeting with knowing who you're interested in.
Individually.
Right.
Like you said, each of us bring the three to five candidates, that's what I'm saying.
Correct, you would bring your three to five to the meeting.
Right, right.
And at the meeting, we walk away with up to six. And this is, you'll see, this is a two-step process. You could do this in one step, but we just feel like the two-step process is better. If you've come up with six, just based on the applications now, then at that meeting, after that meeting on the twentieth, we then conduct reference checks, criminal background checks, newspaper media searches, and also call the references for the six semifinals.
And you do that?
We do that.
Okay.
And then we're going to give you a notebook on each semifinal. The one thing we think folks do wrong is they interview somebody, and then they check their references. Well, that's crazy, because the references are going to tell you what you need to know in order to have a productive and meaningful and thoughtful interview. So we would do all of that, provide you a notebook on each person that you could then, if you take your time and go through, so that when you then get together on May sixth, you'll pick the ones you want to interview. And at the interviews, you'll know all about them. And it's uncanny, for Jackson County, for example, they interviewed on Monday and Tuesday, and they selected the top choice for contract negotiations on Wednesday. Because they had everything they needed at the time they interviewed. So the interview was the last step to be able to make that kind of decision. So this is a doable calendar, I mean, if we can get you interviewing by May, then, you know, we can get into contract negotiations, and hopefully have a new superintendent.
Well, if all of these school systems are turning over, maybe we have some candidates, or they're retiring.
Yeah, they're going to be in competition with Burke, I can tell you that right now. They haven't established their calendar, but I don't think it's going to look a whole lot different from this one. And we will be, for full disclosure, we'll be assisting Burke, because we're there full-time at the time. So they've already asked me last night, of course, to assist them. So there will be some overlap, probably, in the beginning. But that's also not a bad thing, that'll generate a lot of interest.
Yeah, we expect these candidates will be able to come here for an in-person, face-to-face meeting.
They did, they were all able to come for Jackson County, yes. Even the ones that were in other states flew in for the interviews, and did in-person. We offered Zoom interviews to them for safety reasons, but none of them wanted to Zoom, they all wanted to come.
That's such a personal thing, I think it's. I want to see their faces.
So looking at this, I know that the community poll or survey forum, as you said, are they either or? Is it one or the same, when you do both?
We recommend both.
Okay, so are they both a thousand dollars?
No, so that, again, and let me clarify this, those are estimates. These are, we don't do a lump sum. Because we don't think a lump sum, you come out of, we could do a lump sum, and if we did, we'd probably just say twenty thousand dollars. But right now, we're seeing that the total search from start to finish is tracking less than fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, I was just kind of going, but one piece meal, because I knew we did our part, and what we decided on several more minutes ago was to definitely go forward with the community search. The, oh, I mean, the survey, I'm sorry, search, the community survey. And I'm asking you, because you said two times, you said survey, and you said forum, so I'm wondering.
Well, the forums would not cost you anymore, because we would not come.
Okay.
Yeah, we would not come. And in fact, I would tell you this too, with the interviews are extra if you want us to come. I did not participate in the Jackson County interview. We'll provide you with questions, we'll help, we've even got a memo on what questions you can't ask, and what the rules are, and I'll meet with you on all of that.
Would you be there for the interview?
But Jason could certainly sit with you.
Jason could sit with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I feel like we've had our time before.
And we would, and we would tag team, that's the other thing, is if there's something that's more, you know, efficient for Jason to do locally, and again, the other thing, like, you know, we have no, we have no ego in this, and in fact, we know better, that if we form a partnership with Jason and you folks, and work together as a team, it works better. So it makes sense to me that, because I will tell you too, the other thing that's not on the list is, we will assist with contract negotiations, we've got sample contracts, sample provisions, and all of that. In my mind, that would be something you'd want Jason to do, but he could call us, and we would share with him, sample contracts, sample provisions. What I tell folks is, we're not smarter than anybody else, we just do this for so many school boards, that we've got that much more experience. So we'd be happy to share, you know, that experience with Jason, so that he can, he can see it.
They're always the first call. They're always the first meeting.
Okay, oh my gosh, on this anyway.
On everything, anything that we run into, they're always the first call, they, and they do, they keep our first, they work with Tracy directly on all personnel issues, and it's an amazing resource that we have, and partnership that we have with them, so we're thankful to have them. And I think you can now see, with the organizational level that you have, I think your, your decision to go this route has proven to be a wise one.
No, I think this is good, I appreciate this.
In terms of this versus a large blank field.
I will tell you, the largest cost, so to speak, is you have lawyers who are doing the reference checks. You have lawyers that are, our firm calls the references. We think that's huge value added. So with some firms, you know, or groups, if they're charging you fifteen or twenty thousand dollars and doing whatnot, why do we cross ten thousand in our services? It's because real lawyers are actually calling the references, and it takes about an hour to interview somebody and write it up, because you will get a notebook, and you will have a full write-up on every single reference. And to me, that is the most valuable part of the process.
Yeah, no doubt.
Because you start to see themes and consistencies. And what, you know, if somebody's really good at budgeting, you start to see that. If somebody's really good at PR or really bad at PR, you start to see that, there's themes come through. Even with their references, their personality traits come out. If you'll take the time to talk to those folks for forty-five minutes and really delve into questions, so.
Is it ever appropriate, kind of, let's say we have two candidates, for us to call the references and do that?
We don't think so. We would rather follow up on issues that you're concerned about.
With questions that we've got, that makes sense.
And I, I do think it would be helpful for you to have your attorney attend the interviews, because the other thing that's different, I'm asking a few other folks, is, we also believe you should have about an hour and a half of questions, and then you should have thirty minutes of follow. It is ridiculous to say that every question, every candidate should get the exact same question and stop. That's just not, you would not interview a bus driver that way. So why are you going to interview the superintendent that way? So we feel strongly that they are going to give you answers that are going to lead to logical follow-up questions. And the benefit of having your attorney there is, you may be unsure about how to ask a question, or, you know, you don't want to step on something with the ADA or something that they brought up, and Jason will be sitting there, so he can help with that.
Well, I mean, he's been in all closed sessions, since this will be closed session, I would expect that he would not be for anything like this going forward, because we.
We'd want him here for everything, yeah. We see this team. We're all, everybody's sitting at the table.
That question.
Yeah, because again, we're here to assist you in finding your next superintendent.
Do you see what you're doing as screening applicants before they get to us? Or is that something we're doing, and by narrowing down each of us, can we give?
You're doing it by narrowing it down to the ones you're interested in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we don't do any kind of a screening tour, we think you should see them all. The other reason is, it really, the board members that have gone through this process have told me that by going through all the applications, they've learned so much. They've seen, the good applicants seem to bring up the same topics of what's facing public education right now, and things like that, that they actually learn from going through all the applications. And again, we think the best screening in the world is just for you to decide who you're interested in, and I mean this with all due respect, who cares about the rest? If you're not interested in them as your next superintendent, then no one needs to screen them. So we found that that process, and we, you will be doing good to have fifteen applicants. Twenty's a lot.
Okay.
We've seen some districts do twelve, now I may be surprised if you get twenty-five, but.
Pretty offer, I think.
Yeah, and, you know, I hear that. So certainly, we've, you know, Dr. Adell has been a friend for a long time, he was a Buckland County student before he came here. But I, you know, I would be pleased if you had more than twenty, and given your proximity regionally, you might. You know, Jackson County is fairly removed, it's a mountain community, and you really got to want to live in the mountain community. And I think they ended up, was it sixteen applicants, do you remember how many Jackson?
I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen, they had eighteen applicants, so you probably get over them. But again, thirty, forty, fifty, if you get six to eight that you're interested in, that's all you, that's all you can do. And we, and we will not advertise on Indeed.com, or Monster.com, or anything like that.
I hope not.
Who, you, one of our community colleges, Monster.com picked up the application itself. And boy, we got some hung, we did have to prescreen those. Yeah, we got some shamans and all kinds of people.
So what kind of information do you put out there? What kind of, I mean, do you put out package details of what we're offering as a superintendent? Okay, and where does that, where are those package details? Where is that job, the job requirements, and all of that good stuff?
Correct.
And then we need to revisit that, to look at it, to make sure this is what we want, and, does that make sense?
It does make sense, yeah, it does make sense. We don't feel like you need to do a job description, because the folks applying are going to know what you need to be a superintendent, it's more going to be the issues you interview with. So the application, actually, it will not give a salary. The application asks them what their current salary is, and what is their salary expectation if they were to be the next Hickory Public School Superintendent. So we actually ask them, so you can kind of see what their expectations are. But we don't do any kind of a job description. The other thing that's in the application that I'm glad you brought up, because I do want the entire group to be comfortable with this, we suggest you put in there that a doctorate is preferred, but not required. We don't think you should limit yourself. Dr. Putnam was Mr. Putnam when he became the Burke County Superintendent. And I can, I can let, I could rattle off ten misters and mises who were fabulous superintendents, so we don't think you should limit yourself to doctors. But the application will actually say it in that, and there's an ad that goes with it, that we finalize. If you're happy with this process. If you're happy with this process, again, we would want you to appoint two board members to work with us over the next couple of days along with your staff, your attorney to finalize the application and the advertisement to go on. But again, you know, we, we're here for you. You wanna just see a survey and stop, you can do that. I just wanted you to, to see what it would be like if you wanted, if you want somebody in the chair of July one, this is a rocket docket. So, it wouldn't take a lot of time to think about it. You gotta get going.
Well, I think we've already, we've already had a vote to kind of go forward with this. I think that, I mean, to me...
We had a vote to go forward when we went to the poll.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. We voted.
And then, and that was the second one, and then we voted to go ahead and retain you. But I wanna ask something before we try to get out of here. What if we get down to this pool and we look like we don't have anyone that we really...
That you're interested in.
Yes. Do we have to go through this whole process and toss again?
What you would do is, so if you looked at the applicant pool and you weren't happy, we'd have to go back into closed session, have that discussion. And your option there at this late day would be to go ahead and look at it and enter the superintendent for the entire year and then re-advertise and yes, go back to all of us. Again, we're not a search firm. So, who applies, applies. Yeah, yeah, so we, uh... And luckily, that hasn't happened yet. With all the boards we represented, there have been enough quality candidates that the board felt comfortable moving forward.
Right. And so, in essence, you're not a search firm, but you're providing this four avenues of searching.
Correct. Board-assisted searches, we call it.
So, it kinda sounds to me like we got two, two things that maybe we should decide tonight. One being who you're gonna communicate with regarding the advertisement. And then maybe, I'd love to find two dates to set up community forums if we're gonna do that. And that, whether we, I mean, I would suggest maybe we do it at Northview and Grandview to kind of, I mean, if there, if there's another suggestion there, but I mean, that kind of gets...
Two forums.
Two forums, right. And I mean, it'd be nice to go ahead and have those dates set up tonight so that we can, we can advertise that kind of note schedule, let the community go ahead and know about that and have this...
So, like an article and we...
A hundred percent, yeah.
Probably makes sense geographically. That covers...
Just kinda what I, kinda what I was thinking was that gets, that gets our districts, our middle schools.
And the forums are just the community numbers coming in speak. We're not having discussion back in the morning.
It's a cover problem.
And we can help you with the public notice and all that, Ginger considers. It would be more descriptive than your usual public notice. It would say that.
Is something like that, is that something that, that is recorded?
I think you have the option to do that.
What people say? I mean, will there be any minutes from this?
Given the age of COVID, I would suggest that you even, I would think about allowing people to Zoom it in.
I think that makes sense.
As well as be available.
And give their comments on Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And actually be able, and typically, since it's a work session, what you're doing, yeah, what you wanna do. And again, Paula could come do this, but this could save you money if you have somebody who can do it, and hell, you will. You want themes. You're not gonna take minutes in terms of Chris Campbell said, get somebody nice. Paula Love said, get somebody who knows budgets. You're gonna be identifying themes. And so, your work session or forum minutes will say, the board held a forum, heard from forty-five members of the community, and these were the following themes, because those themes are what y'all need to know that will inform you when you're reviewing the applications and interviewing them.
What are primary themes?
Themes, a lot of time themes will come up like, we need a new middle school. That's a theme I see out in my neck of the woods. We need artificial turds. Yeah, we need a superintendent who can improve school morale. Teachers are not very happy. We need a superintendent who's a good negotiator with the county commissioners on the budget. You know, you will hear community numbers come forward, and it's uncanny how certain things will get repealed when those themes will come out.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so you need two people to work on the ad. Attaley, do you, do you wanna do that with me?
Absolutely.
Two of us will do that. So, you can communicate with Attaley and I on that. And then, why don't we try to find two dates?
Now, at least, I know you said the right point. Does the board need to form us to do that? Is that, do we have to do that?
I don't, I don't think you have.
Okay.
They just speak by consensus.
Okay, alright.
And it looks like the dates, we need to find something between April twelfth or March twelfth and April sixteenth, which would be the two kind of key. That window is when we need to be holding our community forums, I think?
Yes, you would wanna complete your community forums certainly before that April sixteenth.
So, April, we have, spring break is April, Easter's the fourth. So, I would say we don't, we don't wanna do it that week, because I, I think a lot of people will be gone. So, I mean, maybe we'll try to do one the last week of March, the second week of April. Now, I'm just throwing those out.
And you could do it later. I mean, you know, you could finish the second forum after spring break, because you're not gonna be selecting your finalists to interview until the beginning of May.
Can we do it, what, maybe two weeks after spring break?
We could. So, so the twenty-ninth, I'm just, I'm just...
March twenty-ninth.
We, we, we have a meeting, we already met on the eighth. We have a meeting on the twenty-second. So, we have five Mondays this March. So, the twenty-ninth, I mean, a lot of us set aside those Mondays for school boards. So, I mean, that might be a good suggestion. I can do it just about any evening that week. And then, I mean, we could even do one the nineteenth if you wanted to, which is, which is after we get the applications, but I don't think that necessarily...
Why don't we do the twenty-ninth?
I think the twenty-ninth. And you look at the one, March twenty-ninth. For the first one? Does, can we, do we need to check with each school to make sure they don't have anything going on at that particular time to find out if we could have one?
I'll do all the...
Do the correct...
The other thing, I, I mean, you tell me if this is a bad idea, but we've got a work session on the twelfth, which are usually short. I mean, we could plan to have a shorter, I mean, a shorter work session and have, and have comments at six o'clock. Do we all have to set aside another date for that? I mean, does that make sense to do?
On April twelfth.
That's April twelfth? Does that, and we'll do that one at Grandview, because we're all gonna get Grandview, and we'll do the other one at, at Northview.
So, on Northview, you don't have to come with the date?
So, we would do Northview on the twenty-ninth, and we'll, we'll do the, after the work session on the twelfth, we'll do it at Grandview. Does that work? I just wanna get these, I mean, I feel like if we get these on the calendar now, we're gonna be much, much better suited to do that.
And this is probably gonna be a six to seven-thirty type, I mean...
I would guess it'll be an hour, maybe.
I think you might even wanna limit the time in your notes. And just, and you can just, because otherwise...
Five minutes, you said.
You may get over there if you have to make...
Well, if you're gonna limit the time, does your public comment usually three minutes?
Three minutes.
Then I give it three minutes.
I think, I think that makes sense, and you could get...
I would stick with, if you're gonna put a limit.
And they, we know that it's very easy to interact with us by, you may have one...
Now, just remember the logistics of that, and, and the forums, we are gonna leave with y'all. We'll, we'll provide you with a notice. But part of the logistics of that is if you're gonna limit the time, you know, is it a first come, first served? Do people email Ginger or somebody and say, I wanna speak, and you're gonna go until the time runs out? You gotta prioritize them in some ways. So, just keep that in mind.
We also have our public comments for the school board, when we're on Zoom or at Burke. So, people can, they can send that to the, I think, to that email address, and they just send their...
Comments in writing. Great idea.
Are you gonna read those again, Sam? Allow, because I do... So, those come directly to me and then I can share.
I don't wanna limit that, because, but I, but I... Right. I would love for people to have an opportunity to sign up, encourage people to sign up beforehand, but not limit them from signing up the day of, so that we have some idea of what we're gonna be...
Now, let me point something out to you. This is not public comment statutory. The only statutory public comment is at your regular meeting.
That's right.
So, what you could do is, you could say, folks have two avenues. You can Zoom in and do it live, or you can submit your comments to this website. Your comments will not be read, but your comments will be provided to all the board members. And your comments will be public record. Now, folks know they have two avenues. They can either Zoom in in person, or they can submit an email.
But it's not gonna be during our comment.
No, this will be during the forum.
This will be during the forum, because once we have closed out our business for the day, then we go into the forum.
Correct, correct.
And we can either be in person, we can be Zoom, or we can be written.
Right, right. And if they're written, legally, you don't have to read those. And if you're trying to provide as many people an opportunity as possible...
That might be worth it.
That may be worth it.
I think, I think that makes sense. We can just always call them.
And, and the part of the notice that we'll send you will tell people that these are public records. It will say in bold, do not discuss specific people, which you send will be a public record. The board is looking for characteristics of the next superintendent. The board is looking for, you know, critical issues facing the hit for public schools. So, we'll, we'll provide you and Ginger with a sample notice that'll save us time.
That sounds great. Do you need, do you need our email address? Do you have those?
So, let me do one other thing. I don't know, have they seen the sample survey? Okay, great. I'm gonna leave the sample survey with you, because I know you've got another announcement to see here. And if you will, you're not in a big hurry on the survey. If you will let, again, what I would suggest is your chair and vice chair know if you want changes to the survey. Okay, this is just, again, this is a sample that you can work off of. We don't need to go over it tonight, because I know y'all have somewhere to do. But you could just let the chair and vice chair know, and they will be our contacts. So, you know, our primary three contacts are going to be you. They'll be the board's attorney, chair and vice chair. And we do everything with chair and vice chair at the same time. That's just the way we are. So, if we need your input, we'll call both of you, arrange your time and continue to do your strategy. What questions do you have?
So, for all of us, you say it's around fifteen to twenty thousand?
So, all of this has been tracking under fifteen thousand, depending on how many references we're gonna check, because that's the big ticket item.
And then, what are we missing?
What you're missing is, we would not be going to the interviews unless you wanna see. That would be an added cost. And then, our participation in the contract negotiation. But again, that's gonna be straight hourly. Jason knows how to do things. I mean, most things, they're fifteen minutes on the phone, we charge for fifteen minutes. We're not in the hot times, we're not in the retainers, we're thrilled that you want us to be involved. These are tax dollars. So, we're very timely with that. We only go charging for what we actually do, and if somebody else can do it, we're not gonna do it.
So, and the candidates come for interviews, is that their ballot or our ballot?
That's your ballot. That's absolutely, yes. There you go. That's another big ticket item that's not here. Your folks gotta fly in, but I think, we had one flying from, from out west. What was it? Keep in mind today?
I haven't seen that one.
I haven't seen that one yet.
Light your cheap fire.
Light your cheap fire.
So, for the a la carte, this is actually a package you put together for us?
Correct.
Okay, so you haven't given us a check here, check here, check here. This is the package you think is best for us right now?
That's correct. Given the tight timeframe, we would suggest that. That's good.
What's good? And so, when we take a look at this and see if we need to add anything to it, will we compromise that on the work session?
Well, I was gonna say, you can. Why don't you converse with Jason on the subject? Did you leave the point? That way, if y'all need a meeting, y'all can have a meeting. That was ready some...
I'd love to get that out as soon as possible, really.
The three of you can coordinate the survey, so y'all let them know with how you feel about the questions. We don't wanna ask too many questions, you know, because then people won't fill it out. There's a psychology there. There needs to be something that people can do in five or six minutes. Or ten minutes if they want.
I think a lot of stories think that's too long.
Yes, thank you. And there, there are two questions where folks can actually write input. And those are valuable comments. And there's a third way you can get rid of contracts.
I think, I think what we're contemplating on the survey is, I think what we're talking about is that once everybody can kind of talk or communicate whatever their desires or changes or conditions are to you and for the program. And then, the three of us can actually do that. We wouldn't have to wait for the next meeting. We can go ahead with that.
The three of you could communicate back to Paula what you want changed. And then, we can get that survey out quicker.
So, give us everybody a week. I mean, I'm just trying to put a timeline on when do we need to have, have, you know, any input on this, that. What's the timeframe? Is it a week from now?
Sure.
Is that next, next Tuesday?
And then, you guys just...
By next Tuesday?
Then you guys just let me know what to find out. We'll write it down, get it out.
Okay.
And there it goes.
Sounds good.
There we go.
We approved that.
Yes.
We did. Yeah, we did. Okay, good. Shouldn't believe we did that last time.
We're waiting. What have I forgotten? Oh, yes. And we will send you, not right now, because we'll be soon enough to get us going. We'll provide all of you with the sample questions, and we'll use that same process. Where you'll have time to give input to your chair and vice chair, and the three of you can finalize them.
Sample questions for interviewers?
For interviewers, correct, correct. Yep. And again, our, what we shoot for is about an hour and a half worth of questions and answers. You know, we, we refine it every time to get it there. So, then hopefully, you've got about half an hour where you can ask all our questions.
Oh, I do have one question. In the past, we've done this at an off-site. Well, Noronhaologist, where we...
We highly recommend doing it off-site, yes.
And are they usually, um, all day?
Well, what Jackson County did, which they really enjoyed...
They did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
They did three candidates on Monday and three candidates on Tuesday, and they knocked it out. And on Wednesday night, they end up to make their selection. So, they, they decided to compress it. Now, other boards, I've seen them interview over two weeks, and then schedule a meeting a week later. This, this proposed schedule does not have your board meeting, does not have the interview dates. But it does have May sixth as a proposed date for you to select your...
I like this, three, three, and then a three.
And you may not have six. You may have five, three minutes left.
We have eight.
Figure out your schedule.
Yeah. Can we also not ask, and you said the Noronha, can we ask for something?
Last thing I would recommend, does anyone know right now that they cannot do April twentieth and May sixth as board dates? Because the earlier week and set fees, I think these are for you folks with your busy schedules and certainly with us. Also, trying to get you ahead of some, or at least competitive with some other school boards on their selection dates.
But I'm sure I'll make it happen.
May the...
Would love to go ahead and set those in stone if possible. If y'all set those in stone, I'll tell Burke County I'm not available in those cases. Yeah, those would be closed sessions.
What's wrong with that?
November twenty.
November twenty. Yes, preferably after fall.
On Tuesday, it'll be on Tuesday. Five-thirty.
On what day?
The twenty-eighth and the sixth.
April twenty and May sixth.
We're gonna give emails, okay?
So, five-thirty?
I know that.
And those two, you'll be back here?
Correct. And April sixteenth will be the date that Ms. Lovett will drive down the mountain with all the notebooks and all the USB drives and meet you wherever you want. We'd love to meet here, to hand them off for weeks. Paula's been a lot of places. And she would love to know that y'all are going on vacation, so. And it may be Saturday the seventeenth. I mean, we'll have them to you. We'll have them to you. We might even back that application deadline up to Thursday the fifteenth, so that we can deliver them on Friday or Saturday. Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll make the application deadline Thursday, so that Paula can bring you those applications on Friday. Excellent. Excited about this?
Yeah, that'll be good.
Anything else? Wanna need a motion then to adjourn the meeting? Favorite say out?